I have the stated time of our meeting for the next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners, welcome to everyone. This time I'll ask the clerk to determine if we have a quorum.
Yes, sir, we have a quorum.
The next item is to pledge allegiance under our application. At this time, I'll recognize Ms. Marie Jackson to take care of that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll do it for her. Okay, our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've made. We thank you for the season that's approaching. We thank you for the birth of Christ. We ask you for leading guidance and direction as we conduct the meeting tonight. And we ask all this in Jesus' name, and all believers saved.
Amen.
Amen.
Next item is a recognition of any elected officials. Next is a recognition of any veterans.
I introduce yourself.
I'm Robert Thompson. I live here in Bulling Springs, lived in Cleveland County for 16 years, U.S. Navy, six years.
Steve Paget, U.S. Army.
Yes, Steve, I'm in Air Force.
Johnny Hutton, U.S. Army.
Does everyone have one of the county pins that we've got?
I do not.
If you come forward, come up to the front, I'll give you one.
Years ago, we had made up as a county seal. My understanding is that great to see you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll recognize any law enforcement present tonight.
Annie Howe, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Andy McGovern, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
So Tom, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, guys. And next, we'll recognize any county department heads.
Martha Thompson, Legal Department.
Chris Martin.
Carrie Mal, Assistant County Manager.
Amy Swanson, Social Services.
Amy SN, Health Department.
Sherri Lanham, Hatch Office.
Thank you, guys. First item on the agenda is a motion to adopt the proposed agenda. Commissioners, before you have the agenda, are there any additions to the agenda?
Make a motion we adopt the agenda as written.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all the favor will say aye. Anyone opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a special presentation. At this time, I recognize Steve Paget for the certified open neural community.
Good evening, Commissioners. Been a while since I spoke to you, but I wanted to, first of all, tell you that I still enjoy what I do. Don't forget that. I'm having fun. I turned 80 last month, in November, and when I quit having fun, I'll retire, okay? But I enjoy what I do, helping people start and grow small businesses. Back in 2015, we started a journey, we, a committee of 11, started a journey to become a certified entrepreneurial community in Cleveland County. That two-year journey ended up with us being certified, and that's still active. That is, we've identified resources in and around Cleveland County to help businesses start up and grow. Entrepreneurs need some fundamental things to get going, but they already have an idea of what they want to do, and they take off and do it. We just want to be sure they have the resources they need. But I'm here tonight to ask for your help. I know I saw a couple of you at a meeting earlier today, and you looked at me scared like. I'm not asking for money, okay? I brought the money. I have money. I'm asking for your help spending it. Now, how's that? A little different, right? I want to let you know that all 58 community colleges, small business centers in the state of North Carolina have received a supplemental funding, and thanks to the legislature of North Carolina. And I kind of have a feeling that maybe Speaker Moore had a little something to do that, but I don't know for sure. But I have $45,304 extra this year from above my budget that I can spend to help small businesses that are struggling and need help. Back three, two or three years ago, we had the COVID issue, and I got some funding then. That was a one-time deal. This tells me that the legislature has recognized small businesses are kind of important, and small business centers all across the state now have this extra funding that we can get counselors, CPAs, marketing specialists, attorneys, whatever it takes for a small business that might be struggling to improve their chances for success. We want them to be successful and profitable. So I'm here to ask your help. If you hear of one, or if you know of somebody that runs a business, or owns a business, or is wanting to start a business that needs some funding, or not funding, can't give them money, but needs some counseling to help their business either grow or start up, please let me know. You know how to reach me, and I'll be glad to share some of these funding sources with the counselors that I can get to help those businesses. If they just want to improve their marketing, I'll be glad to help them. If they need some help with understanding their accounting system or taxes that are coming up, I'll be glad to have a CPA to help them. But I can pay these people to do that now, and I want to share that with you. I bring you good tidings with money, but I still need your help. So get me some names, William. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. At this time, the next item is citizen recognition. Madam Clerk.
The citizen recognition portion of a board of commissioners meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the board to do so. Each presentation will be limited to three minutes. In the event a group of persons supporting or opposing the same position desire to be heard, the board chair may require the group to designate a spokesperson for the group. Speakers may not yield their time to other speakers. Speakers must discuss only items within the jurisdiction of the board of commissioners. While speakers are free to discuss, county employees and officials, the board requests that speakers be courteous and respectful in their comments. Speakers are prohibited from using profanity or making threats of violence or personal attacks against any person. The board is interested in hearing citizen concerns. Yet speakers should not expect comment, action, or deliberation on subject matter brought up during this portion of a meeting. Topics requiring further investigation will refer to the appropriate county agency.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Robert Williams.
So glad to be here. First thing I want to say is I would recommend that the commissioners get with their attorneys a little bit about citizen recognition, about input about suppression of the First Amendment. The Institute of Government's written about that extensively, so I would suggest that you guys be familiar with that. Also, there's a lawsuit against a county that's going to the Supreme Court, maybe already, I don't know, but it's sometime this month, and I had the opportunity to look through some of the filings from the county. It's kind of muted, some of it, but I don't know, I don't really know what's going to But another thing I wanted to mention, some months ago, there were some issues with departments of social services across the state filing phony documents, taking children away from their parents. In Cherokee County, there was a major lawsuit, and Cherokee County lost, and it was awarded the people, the child and her father, was awarded something like 4.2 million. And I had other situations, and I wrote some about it at the time. I said, I think they had two dozen more that was right behind them. And I tried to remind everybody that a lawsuit against a county, if it goes past the insurance, the county has to pay for it. Well, last time I checked, Cherokee County, those two dozen lawsuits that were pending, they settled for $42 million, and it's broke Cherokee County. Cherokee County raised their property taxes to 11 cents. They went from one of the lowest property tax rates to one of the highest, and I just hope that maybe we can take more of a approach, proactive approach, that we don't let these kind of things happen, especially multiple things that go on and on and on, and then the county's liable and all the taxpayers have to pay. So that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent. This time, I recognize the county manager.
Commissioner Gordon. Members of the board, several items for consideration this evening, just bear with me as I work through this lengthy set of items. Item A, customary minutes for review. There's four sets of minutes in your packet for review and consideration. Your November 1st and 15th regular commissioner meeting, as well as your December 5th special call and organizational meeting. All of those minutes are in your packet for review. Item B is from the finance office. This is your monthly managers' report that has all lateral budget transfers for the last 30 days, as well as a few key operational updates. A couple that I'd point out, our local, our audit has been submitted to the local government commission and approved as of last week with no changes, so we're very pleased with that, as well as we have received formal recognition and approval for our 911 center grant from the state PSAT board. Item C and D are your monthly tax reports. Item C is your collection report for November 2022, and we are trending in a very similar position to last year currently at 62.43% collected. Item D is your abatement and supplement report for November 2022. Abatements for the month, $852.26. Supplements total, $39,198.80. Item E for consideration from the finance department, budget amendment number 26 on the year, and this is a request to budget $275,000. In prior year, General Assembly State grant funds specifically earmarked for Broad River Greenway improvements. Item F for consideration is from social services. This is budget amendment number 27 on the year. Request to budget $64,140 and additional FY23 Rural Operating Assistance Program, ROAP, that flows through the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and that will pass through the county to TAC, the Transportation Authority of Cleveland County. Item G from the Health Department, this is a request to budget $14,000 in grants from UNC Chapel Hill, as they've asked the county to participate in the Mid-South Lifestyle Study Program, and those earmarked funds will be used to offset salaries as our staff utilize their time in this analysis. Item H for consideration, budget amendment number 29, and actually, the next three consent items are all part of a new standard change from GASBY. It's GASBY 84, which is our governmental accounting standards board, and those standards are now requiring us to account differently for funds that historically have been utilized in a fiduciary nature. The first one is for our DSS Foster Child Trust Account. The request to budget is $305,000 for that specific funding source. Item I is from the Sheriff's Office, same concept, to be compliant with GASBY 84. This is for inmate trust accounts for detention, folks in the detention center. The budgeted amount is $875,000 for that particular funding source. Item J, which would be budget amendment number 31 on the year, is for fines and forfeitures, forfeitures collected from the clerk of court. Again, a standard accounting change, GASBY 84, and the budgeted amount is $1.2 million. Item K is from the Health Department. This is an annual reoccurring commissioner approval item for financial eligibility and fee schedule. No changes were made. This has been approved by the Board of Health already at their November meeting, and that policy is in your packet for review. Item L from the Sheriff's Office, this is a request to retire and remove the service weapon of former Deputy Tim Sims. As you recall, Deputy Sims has worked for the county in good standing for some time, and after his removal, it's customary, we're asking to retire and to submit his service weapon, which was a Glock nine millimeter. The county asset number is 201258. Item M is from our Planning Department. This is a request to set a public hearing. That public hearing will be held January 17, 2023, case number 2228, and this is a request for a text amendment to our UDO, specifically to create a new zoning district for rural residential. And as you'll recall, in your planning work session in the fall of 2021, the Board of Commissioners asked staff to begin developing the, the language for this new zoning district. You will also recall that in 2005, in the 2021 new land use plan, this was a recommendation, and the intent of this zoning district is to promote more of an agriculture, scenic perspective in more rural districts of the county. Again, tonight, only asking to set the public hearing. Item eight, or excuse me, item N, also from the Planning Department, request to set a public hearing for that January 17 meeting, case number 2229. This would also be a text amendment to add rural home occupation, specifically a type B. As you're all aware, currently, citizens can acquire a permit to do rural home occupation in residential zoning, manufactured home, and rural ag zoning districts at the direction of the board. Staff is working to develop language that would be type B for rural home occupation that would be permitted specifically in areas of five acres or more and would allow a wider use of home occupation. But for tonight's purposes, requesting to set that public hearing. Item O is another request for a public hearing, January 17, for 2235. This would be a more traditional rezoning of parcels 10402 and 10490 that are currently zoned light industrial, and the request from the petitioner is to rezone to residential with a conditional use. The address is 708 Battleground Avenue, and that's between Grover and Kings Mountain. It's approximately 60 acres, and the intent is for a multifamily residential development purpose. Item P from our legal department, as commissioners are aware, with pending leadership change in animal services, we were set to implement new ordinance language specifically around licensing and tethering on January 1, and in recognition of that leadership change, recommendation for staff is to delay implementation until July 1, giving us about six months to onboard and be more prepared for that ordinance implementation. Item Q, also from the legal department, we have an incentive agreement, economic development incentive agreement with Unique Tex, who's LLC, who's done in Kings Mountain. They have approached the county and asked for the county to partner in assigning that incentive agreement to its parent company, which is Unique Tex Holding Company Incorporated. Assignments are allowed per the incentive agreement. That action simply takes board of commissioner approval. This does not change any of the performance metrics inside of the agreement. It's more of a technical change to the contract. Item R is request for the board of commissioners to approve three ARPA policies that are required as part of the Treasury Final Guidance. One is ineligible use policy. The second one is allowable cost policy, and the third one is civil rights compliance policy. Each of those documents are in your packet for review. And finally, for consideration, is from the board of commissioners, and it's your 2023 meeting schedule with pro forma dates and times of meetings. That concludes a very lengthy consent agenda, but I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Commissioners, you've been presented the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or any questions?
I have one for me, just on item E, with budget, it just to pass through, Glenn, from Broad River Greenway, right?
Yes, sir, so that's a state grant from the state General Assembly specifically for that property. Because the county owns the property, there will be a drawdown mechanism. My understanding is that the Broadway Green, Broad River Greenway management folks are doing two things. One, they're developing a site utilization plan that they'll base their improvements off of, but they're also hopefully use part of these dollars for a state, another state grant that would help almost double their amount of proceeds, that requires a matching effort. So yes, it is flowed through from the state to the county and be targeted towards that problem.
Any other questions?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion, the second, to approve the consent agenda as presented. If there's no other questions, all those in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed will say no. All right, carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a series of public hearings. At this time, Madam Clerk.
After a public hearing has been opened, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposition will be asked to come forward and first state his or her name and address. All comments from the public are to be directed to the board of commissioners. There should be no comments made to other members of the audience. If a speaker has a question, that question is to be directed to the chair. No one will be allowed to speak at the hearing more than once unless the chair recognizes a speaker a second time for rebuttal of information brought forth after another speaker has spoken. The original presentation of any speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. The rebuttal presentation of any speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes.
All right, the first of the three is number five, Supplying Department, case 22-31. This is a request to rezone 1103 Hendrick Lake Road from rural agricultural to residential. Mr. Martin.
Chairman, Board, good evening. I have three items for you tonight, where all three are requests to change the zoning of properties. The first is a request from property owner, Mrs. Kimberly Holland, and she's asking to change three parcels that she owns from rural ag, rural agricultural zoning district to regular residential zoning district. The difference between these two districts is that the rural ag district requires a three-acre minimum lot size and allows for both residential uses and non-residential and commercial uses. The requested district of residential requires a minimum of half-acre lot size in this area and is primarily a residential-style district, allowing mostly residential uses and not, and very few, non-residential uses. You can see on the map, on the, displayed on the screen, that the three parcels are adjoining an existing residential zoning district that's indicated in white. If you recall, this, this area was rezoned and approved by this board in June of 2021, so the petitioner, landowner Miss Holland, is asking to extend that zoning district to cover parcels. It's located along Hendrick Lake Road, just off Highway 18. Current uses are residential in nature, just to the west of the property, it is a neighborhood with smaller half-acre lots, and then her properties consist of a couple of single-family Our land use plan designates this area as secondary growth, and when you read the language in our plan about that, it talks about residential uses and neighborhood uses being compatible. We did present this case to the planning board, and they approved and recommended approval, and they noted it would be an existing, or an extension of an existing zoning district. And your options tonight would be to approve, deny, or approve a modified boundary of this request. And this request does require a public hearing, and I can answer any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions or comments before we open the public hearing?
Chris, go back one slide. Go back one slide.
All right, hearing none. At this time, the public hearing is now open, so anyone wishing to speak for or against Planning Case 22-31, again, this is a request to rezone 1103 Hendrick Lake Road from rural agriculture to residential, please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Robert Williams, 814 East State Coach Trail in Boston. Actually, I'm just practicing, make sure I can get up here in time to speak when there's an opportunity. I would, I would just say again, I don't know these people, I don't even know if you're, but it looks like there's no, no doubt with the planning board, and I'd recommend approving. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against Planning Board, case 22-31, which is a request to rezone 1103 Hendrick Lake Road from rural agricultural to residential, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one else, at this time, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, any questions or discussion? All right, what's your pleasure?
I guess just, just a comment, we have, and we moved it, and it's not, and the extension of what we've already done, you know, and if there's no question of whatever, I make a motion that we approve or rezoning.
I'll second.
All right, we have a, we have a motion, the second, to approve the rezoning of case 22-31. Any other discussion?
I have been out there and looked, and it seems to be in harmony with the rest of the neighborhood.
Anyone else? Right, hearing none, all those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. We're on to the next case, case 22-32, 22-32. This is a request to rezone 4206 Boston Road from rural agriculture to residential. Mr. Martin.
Second case is very similar. The property owner is Amy Bollinger, and she's asking to change the zoning of a single parcel, which is about three acres, from rural ag, the same current zoning district, to residential. And again, the rural ag zoning district is a large lot, requires large lots, and allows for commercial uses along with residential uses, and then her requested district is residential, the regular, traditional residential-style zoning district, where the minimum lot size is half acre, but the uses are limited to primarily residential in nature. In this case, also similar to the last case, is adjoining two properties that were approved by this board to be changed last October, October 2021, in fact, from the RA to the R district. She's asking to extend that district to include her property. And this property is located along Highway 18, just north of Hendrick Lake Road. And the surrounding uses, it's really mixed along the highway. You've got some large track agriculture, you see some single-family dwellings, and then you see some business located along Highway 18 as well. Land use plan designates the area as secondary growth, and again, the requested zoning district provides uses that could be and would be compatible with this land use designation. And we presented this one to the planning board, and the same result, they voted to recommend approval, and they noted that it would be an extension of existing district, and the uses would be compatible. And I can answer any questions with this one.
Chris, does the board have any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, if not, the public hearing is now open. Again, anyone wishing to speak for or against Planning Case 22-32, this is a request to rezone 4206 Boston Road from rural agriculture to residential, please come forward and state your name and address.
Robert Williams, 814 East State Coach Trail, living in Boston, I sent a long down address. I'll just say that what I said a while ago on the other one, basically the same as this one, it looks like there's no, no problems with the planning board. I don't see any reason to do anything except approve it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against Planning Department, case 22-32, which is a request to rezone 4206 Boston Road from rural agriculture to residential? If so, please come forward and state your name and address. All right, seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions or discussion?
The one thing I see is that this parcel
The one thing I see is that this parcel, uh, it joins on two sides with where it wants to be zoned, so it wouldn't be considered spot zoning, and when you're in a position like, on, on a line like that, I think the, uh, the property owner should have some leeway into how the zoning is, so, uh, unless somebody else wants to speak, I'll make a motion that we approve this zoning request.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, second, to approve this, uh, request. Is there any other discussion or questions before we vote? All right, seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. So the last case for tonight is Planning Department, case twenty-two dash thirty-four. This is a request to rezone McCraw Road from residential to general business conditional use, and this is for a packet and printing business. Mr. Martin.
It's our third case, it's also a request to change the zoning. The petitioner is Mr. Rob Thompson. Um, he, and he's asking to change, uh, the zoning from, uh, it's on a six acre parcel, and he's asking to change it from residential to general business conditional use for purposes of operating a printing and packaging facility on property. The difference between the conditional style zoning versus the traditional style, which we just saw in the last two cases, that with this conditional style, the petitioner states the use, that they want to use the property for, when they present a site plan, which Mr. Thompson has, and I have displayed on the screen, and the site plan shows how the property would be used if approved. This property is located on McCraw Road, which is in the southwest portion of the county, south of the Broad River. There is a, an existing thirty-two thousand square foot facility or warehouse on the property that was built back in nineteen eighty-five, prior to countywide zoning, and it's been a, a number of businesses over the u, over the years, rug, textile, mill, stores, distribution, fruit, and, and fruit and vegetable stores and distribution and warehouse, and it's the last couple of years it's sat vacant, and Mr. Thompson interested in it, in, in moving this business to this property. Surrounding zoning is residential, and again, the property was built in the eighties, prior to countywide zoning. It's located on McCraw Road, as I stated, and it's, uh, adjacent to the Old Springs Rural Fire Department. And here's an aerial photo of the building, showing access to the property. And if you noted the site plan, there would be no significant changes on how that property would be developed if approved. The land use plan calls this area rural preservation, and that basically means that uses should be rural in nature, um, and it talks about with non-residential or commercial uses during intersections. With this request, you know, your, the petitioner is basically asking to change the zoning of one parcel surrounded by a much larger zoning, you know, much larger area that's on the same, so, um, it could be considered spot zoning. With those types of situations, staff usually suggest to petitioners to do the conditional style, so you're stating the use to make sure that that use would be compatible with the area around it. Planning Board has reviewed this case, um, they recommend approval, um, they noted that the building has historically been commercial in nature, commercially used, um, and that the, the proposed use would not be out of character with the history of this property, and that, uh, it wouldn't be a negative impact on the neighborhood. And this one also requires a public hearing, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Board, before we open the public hearing, do you have any questions for Chris regarding this case? All right, look, sorry, go ahead.
And I, I feel to add that, um, with this case, you have, your, your options would be to approve, deny, and then, a little different than the last couple of cases, since it is a conditional request, you do have the ability to, um, work with the petitioner on any conditions that may be needed to, to help that use and property be in harmony. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Board, do you have any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, hearing none. At this time, the public hearing is now open. Uh, anyone wishing to speak for or against case twenty-two dash thirty-four, this is a request to rezone McCraw Road from residential to general business conditional use for a packet and printing business, please come forward and state your name and address.
Robert Williams, April, Tennessee State Coach Trail. In this particular one, this conditional use thing, I, I, I'm well over the limit to remember before it was any zoning that you could do these kind of things. And I, I, as far as I can remember, all three of these public hearings, we had them before, and remember some things from up in the past. So I would just say, hey, my, I would recommend approving it, but look at this conditional use thing and try to minimize that as much as possible. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against case twenty-two dash thirty-four, request to rezone McCraw Road from residential to general business?
Uh, Robert Thompson, five oh seven Clyde Wallace Road, Shelby. Yeah, I'm the one that put in the petition for the request, uh, for the building, uh, we started our company, we're a veteran owned small business. Uh, my brother and I started this company back in June, we're a startup. We were looking for a place to grow the business, where we can, and the amount of room that we needed to grow the business, and, uh, finding something at a reasonable price that would accommodate the business was a little difficult, and then we were very happy to find this property, our intention is purchase the property, we're going to be on a lease of own with, I mean, or lease with an option, uh, starting next year. There's a lot of improvements that we intend to make to the property, because it really doesn't look all that great the way it is right now. Uh, we're, we don't have a lot of trucks going in and out all the time, there won't be a lot of traffic, uh, we probably get maybe two or three trucks a month at the most, um, in the current, you know, operating conditions that we have, so. So I just wanted, if you had any questions for me about the business, and how it works, and what we do, we'd have you answer any of those at all.
Any questions? Thank you.
Good, thank you very much.
Uh, so, one last time, is anyone else wishing to speak for or against case twenty-two dash thirty-four, request to rezone McCraw Road from residential to general business conditional use for packet and printing business, please come forward and state your name and address. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions or discussion?
I have a question for Chris, if I may.
Chris.
Okay, understanding. It was a business, I got no problem with it, but with the, with the business conditional use, is that for that business only, or can the business change?
That's a good question. Um, with the conditional style zoning, if approved, it would be limited to the requested use and the site plan, the way that, that property is developed on site plan, so they would be limited there to that use.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Uh, whenever looking at this, I think this goes back to what we've been trying to do for the last couple of years, is, there's a lot of, uh, properties like this property that has been in non-compliance because it's in a residential area. So I think by us changing it, uh, to a conditional use business, it will suit the nature of the business better than if it stayed residential, so, uh, I can make a motion that we, uh, that we approve the zoning.
So you're making a motion to approve. So we have a motion to approve. So now we have a motion, and a second to approve. Are there any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, uh, will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Now we're down to the regular, regular agenda. First item is pending refunds and release, Sherri Laverty.
Good evening. Um, as you can see, we have some requests from taxpayers for a release or refund. Any taxpayer who wishes to oppose the collection of property taxes, can apply the tax before the Board of County Commissioners. But to, uh, General Statute one oh five three eighty-one, this authority is only granted to the Board of County Commissioners. But I'll go over about a defense, um, before I get into the actual weeds of the request. A taxpayer may assert one of the following three specified defenses for a request for a release or refund. They have proved that it would tax, tax imposed through clerical error, an illegal tax or a tax for an illegal purpose. Clerical errors referred to errors made on behalf of the tax office. These would include unintended transcription errors, post naps. They do not include judgment errors on behalf of the impletor, those would have to be taken care of during evaluation appeal process, um, but the prior years would have had them been appealed. The second category is illegal tax, which refers to situations such as double taxation, uh, or situs, or physical location errors. Taxes levied for an illegal purpose is an extremely uncommon defense, uh, this would include taxes levied for a purpose not permitted by state law or the General Assembly. These three specific grounds were, uh, appeal of the tax are exclusive, no other defense for the tax may be considered pursuant to one oh five three eighty. Our first request for refund meets the criteria of a clerical error and illegal tax, since the tax office had incorrectly assessed Ms. Harden's double wide, um, manufactured home as both real and personal property. So we have her, um, recommended staff as to approve her refund request for those two years, for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three, uh, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. The, the second request comes from Electric Last Fiber America, for when I was fifteen, for tax years twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two. The release request for twenty twenty-two came in during the current year, um, so we recommend approval of that release, um, but the three prior years, um, were not done as an appeal of evaluation. They do not meet the criteria as a clerical error, because it's from a clerical error on the part of the company, not the tax office. It does not meet the criteria as an illegal tax or a tax for an illegal purpose, um, so we are recommending to deny those refund requests. Requested action tonight is for the Board to accept staff recommendations for a referral or denial submitted by the tax office, and we have questions.
Thank you, Sherri. Board, do you have any questions?
So we have two different ones to look at, right?
Yes, you have a request from Ms. Reba Harden.
Let's take, let's take that one and then...
Yeah, we'll separate it, so...
Yeah, separate it.
Request from Ms. Reba Harden, that was due to the fact that the tax office had incorrectly assessed her property for double wide manufactured home as both real and personal, so it was double taxed, so it does meet the criteria as clerical error and an illegal tax.
Make motion, then we release the funds back to her, so what you need?
Uh, yes, to, to, to approve those requests.
Second. Any other questions or discussion? So, so we're clear, this is a release, or allow the tax office to release or repay Ms. Harden for her double taxation or piece of real estate? Correct? So is there any other questions or discussion before we call for the vote? All right, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. First one, it passes unanimous, so now we're on to N E G.
Again, the reason we split those up, the twenty twenty-two tax year is the current tax year, so we feel like it would be appropriate to correct their, um, numbers and release that, uh, payment back to them for the current tax year, however, the three prior years are past their statutory limits.
Mr. Chair, my... So, yeah, as my understanding, we can't legally release the first two.
That's right, so the, the request from staff is, the, the, the taxpayer has requested a release and a refund, refund the prior year, release of current year. The recommendation from staff is to release the current year, it hasn't not yet been paid, it's been billed but unpaid, so we're recommending approving that, but not approving the refund, which we're not allowed to do by law. Uh, so that is the recommendation from staff.
So I'll make the motion that we accept the recommendation from the staff and refund the current year.
I'll second.
So that's the direction, you're good with that?
Yes.
All right, so are there any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. All right. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Sherri. Next item on the agenda is Public Health Department update. Ms. Tiffany Hanson.
May I move forward? Thank you for having me tonight. Bear with me, my voice is a little bit, you know, kind of foggy, but I'll do my very best. Uh, so as I've said, our chair, speaking, uh, Public Health update for tonight, uh, really, I'm framing it around where we've been, where we are right now, and where we're hopeful to be going from the public health lines. So where have we been? This wonderful work continues to haunt us for the last three years. Um, but the COVID nineteen pandemic really has encapsulated, uh, public health, really from twenty nineteen till now. Just reminding everyone of what that lift looked like, and, and what we have been able to accomplish as a team, plan and execute seventy-six drive-through events in partnership with Cleveland County Fairgrounds, uh, which was incredible. Our team administered over thirty-eight thousand vaccines, which really equates to about forty percent of all the vaccines that were conducted in the county, so, you know, wonderful, wonderful feat there. We partnered with over fifteen local businesses to do vaccinations at their locations, like Eaton, Clearwater, the schools, um, a number of those took advantage of vaccination events. We've done COVID nineteen testing on over five thousand individuals in the county, and we've distributed over twenty thousand at-home test kits, um, throughout the duration of the pandemic. Where are we now? So for the better part of this year, COVID has luckily kind of been at the, the bottom of the totem pole a little bit, um, we've been able to be in this non-crisis, really kind of re-engaged, um, mentality, focusing on our nearly twenty programs at the Health Department, their strategic plans, trying to figure out, really back to our passion of public health, prevention, our partnerships, and then ultimately that community focus, and, and where we're going, how we really focus in on how we make Cleveland County better. So, where are we going? As I mentioned, we spent the better part of the last year really re-engaging around community wellness, this community focus, trying to be strategic and capitalizing as well on your focus area of community wellness. And so with that, uh, we have some proposed projects that we think as a team, uh, we would love for you to hear and explore tonight, so what we're calling is our Community Wellness Improvement Plan, and it's a three-pronged plan, really, really utilizing our General Assembly five million dollar grant that Speaker Moore was able to get for us. This would include, first, the establishment of primary care at the Health Department. The second prong of this would be the establishment of a mobile health screening unit, and then the third prong is the establishment of a mobile dentistry unit. Really, I think above everything else, as part of my presentation tonight, that I want you to know, is that there's no local resource allocation that would be needed in order to achieve these three prongs, and these three prongs, we believe, really address the most critical needs in the county from a community health and wellness perspective. So we'll dive in just a little bit more on kind of how we unfolded those things, so what do we know? Uh, we know that Cleveland County notoriously lies in the, the lowest quadrant for overall health and wellness, we're in the twenty-fifth percentile, eighty-third out of the one hundred counties in North Carolina. One of the largest contributing factors to this is premature death, um, that actually weighs into that figure about fifty percent, and so when we look at premature death just a little bit more here, you can see in that top graph there, that red line is Cleveland County, and as you can see, it is not getting any better, we're actually getting worse. And that bottom bar graph tells me also that that is not improving, that's years of life lost prior to age seventy-five, so we, for every person that dies prior to seventy-five, that number gets added. So we, for every person that dies prior to 75, that number gets added together essentially to create this larger number in what they measure. That's how we get that 10,200 figure. So when we drill down on why are people in Cleveland County dying early or dying at all, these are top 10 causes of death. And as you can see from the top 10 causes of death, 80% of these can be impacted by preventative services or early detection. So when we think early detection, we think primary care, right? That's where people go, they get their physicals, that's where we get screened early on, first services and things like that. So these are our ratios for primary care physicians in the county. And really what it says is we have one doctor per every, just over 2,000 individuals in the county for primary care. Again, this graph on the right here shows us Cleveland County in the red, indicating that we continue to get worse in this metric, and we are substantially worse than both the state and the national average in really access to primary care physicians in the county. So who do we think is most vulnerable in the county? These, on the left here indicates our number of uninsured in the county, so we have about 14% of our population is completely uninsured and they have no insurance. And then additional 35,000 or 35%-ish are on Medicaid. So roughly about 50% of our population have limited or low access to care within the county. Benefits of prevention, primary care services, so 10% increase in life expectancy actually translates to about 0.4% in economic growth throughout the year. So that's impacting our workforce and people's ability to work and prolong their lives. A homeless person visits the ED on average about five times per year, costing us just a little under $20,000 a year. 15% of uninsured adults use the emergency room as their primary care because they don't have an alternative. So I think there's definitely benefits, and we can see that financially on primary care prevention and those tactics as well. So as I mentioned at the beginning, we were fortunate enough to get awarded a $5 million from the General Assembly to really support this work around uninsured and underinsured primary care and accessing Cleveland County. It was originally awarded in partnership with Atrium, and we thought that we maybe would build a structure and Atrium would operate that structure. As we had numerous conversations, did some data mining, the project has slowly evolved to essentially the, where we've landed right now is the Health Department would operationalize primary care in our building as well as this leg of, of mobile units. So one for health screenings, and then the second would be for mobile dentistry, both in partnership with Atrium for virtual care as well as in partnership with Governor Webb on the mobile screening unit. So what might that business model look like? So really, it's evaluating current space at the Health Department, which we've started to do, and we recognize through our data mining that we have the ability to accommodate there. It would be obtaining both the mobile screening units, working through those partnerships with Governor Webb, Atrium, and Cleveland County Schools for mobile dentistry, adding on that virtual care specialty referrals for Atrium. And then ultimately, the goal here is really to access, to increase access to primary care for our most vulnerable populations in the county. So I mentioned the mobile screening unit. So this is an example here at the bottom of a mobile screening unit, estimated around $280,000. I said that we would partner with Governor Webb on this, this unit, which is really for student experience as well as staffing. So we're able to capitalize on that partnership, and they can actually help us as the mobilizer of the county by providing students and staff to do screenings for A1Cs, to check, to check our diabetics, our prediabetics. We're going to be checking for hypertension because we recognize cardiovascular disease is a big deal in our county, as well as cholesterols, and providing health education to those individuals, as well as a direct link it back to the primary care clinic at the Health Department. This particular unit is estimated, we're going to operationalize around three to four days per week, really at locations throughout the county, churches, libraries, community events, city halls, really any place that we can be present and have people take advantage of that particular service. Potential referral patterns to the primary care unit at the Health Department would come from, as I mentioned, the mobile screening units. They would come from area providers. Our employee wellness could also send people to the primary care clinic, as well as the Atrium Emergency Department. So the third leg of the proposal is the dental, mobile dental. And so what does dentist and dental services look like in Cleveland County? In 2019, it was identified as a critical need in the county. Similar to primary care, we have a limited number of dentists, although improving still, we're, we're light years away from the national and the state average, one dentist for about 2,200 individuals. We have over the last five years worked with Cleveland County Schools to screen because we do have a pediatric dental clinic at the Health Department right now. And as you can see from those numbers, we've worked really, really hard and got to almost 2,000 students that are screened at Cleveland County Schools. However, what we continue to see here from parents is that transportation is their largest barrier. During the duration of the screens that we've conducted this year, about 27% of our students that we screened had moderate to high needs for dental services. And so we definitely know that there is a need for dentistry, and we understand that there's this big connection between oral health care and overall health and wellness, as well as only 10% of students or children, 6 to 18 in Cleveland County Schools, identified that they had a dental home. So 90% of our children do not have a dentist that they see routinely. So as I mentioned, 27, 27% of our students had moderate to high dental issues when they were screened this year. So this is me, second grader Julie, I changed her name because of course we want to protect her, but this is one of the scenarios that we hear never ending when we do these screenings. So Julie had extensive oral decay, so much so where it was impacting her ability to concentrate in school. She wasn't eating well, so she wasn't sleeping because she was hungry. Her parents and her teachers both picked up on this as something that was a challenge. However, it was very challenging for her parents to be able to get her to a local dentist, not only from insurance, but taking time off work. They did not have reliable transportation at the time, so that, all of those things coupled together made it very hard in order for them to get Julie to some sort of dental care. We partnered with Cleveland County Schools in order to do those screenings that I mentioned before. So our team went out and screened her, of course, identified these needs, and then worked with the school's social worker and her parents in order to get transportation to the Health Department to provide the level of treatment that she needed. And so ultimately, she got that treatment, she was able to get herself situated, and we got her fixed up, and she was able to return to school, and it was in much, much better shape and, and very happy, I think, ongoing there. No one had to miss work, and we were really able to meet the needs of that transportation barrier. So with that being said, this mobile dentistry piece comes into play here. So this is an example of a three-operating mobile dental unit, estimated around 640,000, operates similar to our in-house pediatric dentist clinic. We obviously process billing and insurance, and then we slide for those that are uninsured. The plan of operations for this unit would be to spend a week at each of the 29 schools in Cleveland County. And so this would rotate, this would provide screenings, preventative care, treatment, two students throughout the entire year, throughout the entire county. Sustainability for all three of these are really, we bill expenses as well as we provide sliding fee scales, so we would use our restricted non-local user fees, which is our billable services for these. And again, really just us circling back, trying to be refocused, really getting re-engaged with this community health and wellness. And we really do believe that these three-pronged approach will assist us in moving the needle on community health and wellness moving forward. So with that, I am requesting some action from the Board to either approve, deny, or modify the Community Wellness Improvement Plan, which would include the establishment of primary care at the Health Department, the two mobile units, which would be the health screening unit as well as mobile dentistry. And that is all included in Budget Amendment 32, which I believe that you all have in your packet requesting to be budgeted as well. Any questions?
Tiffany, or do you have any questions?
I guess I got a question. Who's paying for all this?
So I may not have said it clearly enough or early enough, Johnny, but, uh, Commissioner Hudson, but the, what will be paying for this will be the $5 million state grant that we were awarded from the General Assembly.
But who continues to cost all?
So then...
After getting it going, somebody's got to pay for the operations.
Yep, so then to pay for operations, we're going to bill for services. So we'll bill as we get patients in that are insured, then we bill for those particular services, and that's what will help us sustain the programs.
Open, extend the program.
Does, um, do some of these students, would they qualify for Medicare or Medicaid?
Some do.
To help offset the cost?
Many of them do, actually.
So, and we've got the ability to help them gain that if they don't already qualify?
Correct, yep. So then we would definitely connect them to insurance and give them Medicaid eligibility if they had to work.
Because I, I think some of the, some of the, some of our citizens just don't know how to get that.
Right.
Even though they qualify.
It's a challenging process to manage.
I make a motion, we approve this request from the Health Department.
I'll second it. I think it's going to be a good thing for our community, even though that some of the downside of it, that maybe we can improve the ranking of our county and help some of the people, like saving transportation, we've got tax and other ways that they can get I think it's always going to be a good thing.
Well, we need to figure out some way to bump that 83% up. We're, you know, it's a, it's sort of embarrassing to see our county when we're doing so well with a lot of other things, that our citizens' health is not where it ought to be.
Manager, please comment.
Yeah, I, I would just say that one thing that we know as it relates to the Robert Wood Thompson Community Health rankings is that certainly poverty is a big challenge in our community, access to care is a big challenge in our community, and the, the data is pretty clear that eight out of 10 of the causes of premature death could be prevented with early detection or at least extended, you know, to help deter some of that. And none of this is possible without the support of our, of our local legislators, legislators and, and the delegation that we send in Raleigh, and they've really, I think, advanced our, our ability to impact that ranking. But the ranking, you know, as the Board of Commissioners have prioritized now for six years, as you add that focus area to your strategic plan, it's just a number that, that really represents people's lives. And so, you know, it's one of the things that I'm most proud of is Tiffany and her, her work and her teams and the support, support of that initiative. And lastly, the support and the buy-in from the General Assembly is, I think, ultimately what makes this possible. And I see it as, I agree with Commissioner Hudson, a really meaningful plan. So I appreciate the support of the Board of Commissioners.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions or discussion? All right, here and now, all the favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. All right, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Next item was several board appointments, so at this time, I'm quick.
Good evening, Board. We have several board appointments. The first one is the Cleveland County Agricultural Advisory Board. You have the list of applicants in front of you. You will need to appoint three people for a three-year term set to expire December 31, 2025. Please note, I have made contact with Amanda Strickland from Soil and Water Conservation several times about this. All of the applicants have been vetted, fit the criteria, are members of what they need to be, and all have the support of Soil and Water Conservation. They are happy with whoever you all choose.
Great, I'd like to nominate Randall Green, Robert Henderson, and Joseph Lael.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second for Mr. Green, Mr. Henderson, Mr. Lael. Any other questions or discussion? All those favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries.
The second one is the Cleveland County Board of Health. As you know, this board requires specific seats that need to be filled. You have the list of applicants in front of you and their occupations and what seat they would be filling. At this time, you need to appoint four people for a three-year term set to expire December 31, 2025.
I'll make a motion, we will appoint Dr. Vollmer, Christina Alexander, Dr. Heiner, and Dr. Carter.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, second to appoint the four names mentioned. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next one is the Cleveland County Historical Preservation.
You have the list, yep, you have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you'll need to appoint one person who would fill the unexpired term of Mott Davis for the required municipal seat, and this term would end July 21, 2023.
I'd like to nominate Greta Rio Cooper.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion, second to nominate Ms. Rio Cooper. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, all those favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous.
The next one is the Rural Fire Commission.
Hold on a second. So since this involves me, I'm going to recuse myself. I dropped my mic.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll open it for, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You're fine, you're fine. The Rural Fire Commission, at this time, you all will need to appoint one commissioner. So, Mr. Vice Chair, if you'd like to take nominations on which commissioner you would like to serve, you all as the board, as representatives.
We'll open the floor for nominations for the Rural Fire Commission.
I'd like to nominate Kevin Gordon.
I'll second it.
Second. All right, we have a, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Here and now, 100%.
Thank you, sir. Next item is the Kings Mountain Planting and Zoning.
Yes, sir, you have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you will appoint one person for the Cleveland County ETJ portion for a three-year term set to expire December 31, 2025.
Nominate Ronald Atkins.
I'll, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, second for Mr. Atkins. All those, any questions or discussion? Here and now, all those favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a closed session. It's a closed session for another Colonel General Statute 143, 31811. Paragraphs A5 and A6 to consider personnel matter to establish the terms for unemployment contract.
Make a motion, give him a close second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Here and now, all those favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. All right, we're in closed session. All right, we're in closed session.
Open session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Alright, so that everybody knows, so during closed section there was action taken on matters in closed session and two actions that require vote in open session and they are as follows. One was to approve an increase to the sheriff's salary by six percent for the 2023 calendar year. We need a motion in a second.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none, all in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next one was approved for an increase in the registered deeds salary of about twelve percent effective for the 2023 calendar year.
Make motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none, all in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Breaks us to the end of our agenda before we adjourn. The next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Friday, January the thirteenth, nine AM at the American Red Cross building located at thirteen thirty-three Falston Road and this will be in Shelby. This is for Commissioners' work session. With that, motion to adjourn.
Ten minutes.
Second.